Here.
Powers.
Yep.
Brown.
Here.
Jarvis.
Here.
McLean.
Here.
Nesbit.
Here.
Rezegi.
Here.
Tassava.
Here. Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the eternal covenant which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Did anybody get a chance to look at the agenda? Did anybody get a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Uh, we have to delete item number six. Uh, clerk treasurer will not be sworn in tonight, so strike that from your agenda. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support. Motion by McLean, supported by Jarvis, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always same. Approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2024 regular meeting. Everybody get a chance to look at them. Any corrections or additions?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 10th and place them out filed.
Support. Okay, motion by Jarvis, seconded by Nesbit, to approve the minutes of the June 10th, 2024 regular meeting. Roll call.
Powers.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Item six was stricken. Uh, item seven, public hearing. We have no public hearing tonight. Item eight, public comment. At this time, anybody who wants to address the council, I'll give you three minutes. Tell me who you are and where you live.
Are you ready? Hello, my name is Heather Wing, and I would really like the opportunity to be your next county treasurer. Sue Van De Carre is retiring at the end of her term, and I have decided that it's time to use my skills and abilities to benefit the Berry County residents. I have previously served Berry County on the Board of Commissioners, where I served as chair for two years. I am serving on the Berry County Conservation Easement Board, which I've been a member of for eight years, and I'm currently their chair. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in administration. And when my grandpa asked me why I was going back for that second degree, I said, "So I can learn to be a boss, grandpa," and he said, "I think you're plenty bossy enough." So I have a dairy farm in Assyria Township with two teenagers. We milk about 100 cows, and if that doesn't keep me busy enough, I'm also right now the Assyria Township clerk. So I'm a little familiar with fund accounting, which is how the state of Michigan has decided everybody gets to do their accounting software. I do have two things that I would like to do in the treasurer's office. One is bring back the monthly county treasurer meeting. As a clerk, I've been able to do the monthly clerks' meetings, and I gleaned so much information from clerks who've been on the job for a lot longer than I've been a resident here. And I think it's a valuable tool for the treasurers to use. My treasurer says, "I really miss those meetings. I learned a lot," and that's one thing I'd like to bring back. I think they went away with COVID. The other thing I would do is evaluate technology. So I know that in our office in Assyria Township, technology has been an afterthought. As long as the computer still turns on, it works. And so I would like to look at stuff, and knowing that if I wait 10 years or five years, technology's going to be a whole lot more expensive to update. So that would be the one thing that I would look at. Other than that, Sue has left a very long legacy of a lot of hard work in serving Berry County citizens, and I would like to pick up her mantle and carry on with that. If you have any questions, I'm stick around for your meeting because that's the first time I've been up here. So thanks for your support.
Okay, Heather, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Terry Dennison, and I sit on the Berry County Commission on Aging Board and have proudly spent on that board since 2002. If you could age anywhere, where would it be? Would you opt for a warmer climate, live with family, move to a facility? Years of studies have shown that the goal of many older adults is to age in place, in their homes or in a community that supports seniors. For Berry County residents, the Older Citizens Services, Millage Supports Services provided by Berry County Commission on Aging that helps make that possible. Commission on Aging's mission is to provide innovative services and resources to promote and support independence, dignity, and quality of life throughout the journey of aging for Berry County seniors and their families, too. The aging baby boomers, that population, longer life expectancies, and declining birth rates have led to a new demographic phenomenon. A rapid growth in the older population, in the older adult population, Berry County Commission on Aging is constantly striving to meet the ever-changing needs of our aging population.
Hi, excuse me. My name's Betsy Colgan. I'm on the Berry County Commission on Aging Board. I haven't been on as long as Terry has, but then again, who hasn't, right? I'm just going to continue with our report here. Services for older adults, such as meals on wheels, adult day services, in-home care, have been supported by the Older Citizens Services Millage since 1981. In August, this August, voters are being asked to support a renewal of 0.4665 mil per year, an increase of 0.0335 mil to restore amounts needed. This would result in a levy of 0.5000 mil a total. So what does this mean for the average taxpayer? The renewal and override back to half a mil will cost the average homeowner less than $3 in additional taxes. Total taxes levied to support senior services would be less than $45 a year. So in appreciation of our shared mission to support the Berry County seniors, Terry and I respectfully request your support for the Older Citizens Services Millage on the primary on August 6, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Yes?
Thank you.
Oh. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Courtney Zanini, Executive Director at Commission on Aging. I have a fact sheet that if you don't mind, I'll pass out when I'm done speaking. But I did pull data for the Hastings area residents, services that are provided by Commission on Aging, so I thought I'd share that with you this evening. In the last six months, nearly 8,000 meals have been served to homebound seniors in the Hastings area. We have provided in-home care services for 52 residents totaling nearly 1,000 hours. We have three clients currently that attend our adult day service from Hastings. We have 68 residents that are participating in our lunch at our congregate site here up on Woodlawn Avenue. We have over 20 regular attendees that are bingo. We have nine Hastings residents that have taken advantage of our Medicaid and Medicare assistance program. We have regular attendees to the paint group, our line dancing group, blood pressure checks, foot clinic, and our cars and games group. So I just wanted to share some of those services and break it down to let you know what Hastings residents are utilizing. Can I pass this out to?
Are you done speaking?
I am, yes.
Okay. Go ahead. Anybody else?
How you doing there? Gary White, Nashville. I'm running for county commissioner, but it's not in this area here. But I have been going around for nine months to a year and talking about different things that the county is doing or not doing, like the Health Department adding nine new positions on there and stuff, and only one person voting no on a couple of them on the county commissioners from the Berry County side. Tonight I passed out, you know, this is a senior campus development conceptual plan. This was put out April 24th of this year at the steering committee. And my concern on this one is, well, and maybe it should be a concern for the city of Hastings and stuff, they're actually moving the COA out of the city of Hastings. Some of you may know it, some of you may not know it. Do the residents of Hastings know it? If you look down there on the second-hand column, it talks about the amphitheater and food truck court, playgrounds, splash pad, pavilion with stage, pickleball courts, orchard, future development. I don't believe this is a government's responsibility to have all that stuff, and then when you're talking about seniors, it concerns me a lot. When I go around in my area and we talk about having this COA moved out five miles outside of town, how is that going to impact your businesses? How's it going to impact your community? And how's it going to impact your seniors? You heard some numbers, you know, will they follow it or not? Or will they not go out there? So that's a big concern. The second page back there talks, it has some minutes where they are working on this. Tuesday, they did hire a construction manager, so it's going to happen whether we like it or not, or whether the city of Hastings likes it or not. The third page, it talks about the county budget, just general property tax income. In 2022, they passed a projected property tax revenue of $13,996 was projected. When it came to 2024, it actually went up $15 million, so over $1 million they went underneath. And in the next year, they're predicting another $700,000 increase on property taxes, and the following year, another $700,000 increase on the property taxes. They're saying, my commissioner at Caston Township said that now they want a half mil for a jail on top of this is what he wants to start coming on. People are, we're running out of money as the people. So it's, you know, it's things like this that you, as elected officials, you got to start being concerned. Young people don't have that opportunity like we used to. Back when I was a kid, they said, "Never go more than a quarter of your annual income." Now they're approving 50% to 60% of annual incomes for housing alone. That doesn't leave much for living, does it? So keep that in mind. The other thing, FOC building, front of the court building, I think some of you folks were wanting that development, the development down there to have that building also. County decided not to do it. Now they want to open it up because they need a couple office spaces, 9,100 square feet. Doesn't make a lot of sense, does it? So as you're looking at candidates for county commissioner and stuff, you might want to think about what's going on, and can we afford what's going on right now? As I said, once again, I've been over, am I done? All right, I'll come back. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, my name is Christine Turpinin, and I am the founder of Albe Your Rock, Support for Rural LGBTQ Youth. I founded this in the neighboring town of Vermontville, and we have chapters that are growing enroll communities all over Michigan, and one most likely coming to Hastings soon to support your children. I was asked to be here tonight because I expected more pitchforks. I heard that was at the last meeting, and I think that speaks very well to your community. I go to a lot of school boards where I have to keep going back and going back because people show up to demean kids, and they just, they don't give up. And so I think it says a lot about Hastings being forward-thinking, inclusive-thinking. I had a whole speech that was for the pitchfork holders. So I will shorten it to thank you as a Hastings City Council for approving Hastings Pride. And it is something for you all to be proud of, because when you go to Lansing or Grand Rapids, those are wonderful prides, but they are geared towards adults. And we're rural people, even in the city of Hastings. We're, quite frankly, we're quite rural, and we're raised family-oriented, and that's what your pride will be next weekend. And that's something to be proud of, because queer adults come from somewhere, right? And they grew up generations before in communities that did not support them. In Hastings, you're being a leader, and I appreciate that because I founded Albe Your Rock because 60% of LGBTQ kids, and that might be even a little higher now, but 60% consider suicide and self-harm. But if those kids have just one rock or know one gay adult themselves, those horrible statistics dramatically drop. So what happens when these kids come from a community that values them? By allowing them to have this family pride, you're saving lives. And I'm going to save the rest of my speech that I had for naysayers and just thank you all. You're saving lives, and next weekend, you're having a festival here in Hastings that is to be proud of, and I thank you. And I also want, if I have more time, this is secondary, but I'm also running for state rep in District 78. Children are my number one priority, but I care about so many things, being raised rural myself in Calamo Township, not too far in Hastings, being the town we go to when we needed things, when we needed help, care, and whatnot. So I'll just put that out there, but once again, thank you so much for being leaders.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving on, we have a presentation tonight from Dave Hatfield, Berry County Commissioner. Dave?
Thank you. Nice to be with you again, and I can thank Courtney and her, a couple of her board members for giving their report on COA, because that's one of the main things that I wanted to give you an update on, but you had it. One thing I do absolutely want to acknowledge, though, is the work that Courtney has done throughout the county, holding sessions to acquaint people with the proposed project. And I want to still use the word propose, because while we are moving forward, it has not been completely finalized at this point. There still is opportunity for public input as we move it forward. But this project has been very well-vetted. I think the majority of people do know what's going on and have been very encouraged by the additional services that they will be able to provide once they get into a new facility. So it is a great project. One thing that I do want to also reinforce is the fact that the operating millage that Courtney was talking about is totally unrelated to the building project. There are no funds for the building included in that operating budget. The operating budget covers program. There are some that would like to try to create confusion over those two issues and use objections to the facility as a way to shoot down the renewal on the operating millage. I hope that no one listening to this is so confused. Other things that are going on, perhaps the one that's taking quite a bit of time is the search for Michael Brown's replacement. Michael technically is eligible for retirement the end of August, but he has indicated to us that if necessary to effect a good transition, he will stay on beyond that point in some capacity. Talking to our search consultant last week, we've received 15 applications as of the middle of last week, nine of whom he considered to be really strong candidates. So we have not had an opportunity to look at those yet, but that'll be coming up in a couple of weeks after more due diligence has been done by him. So I'm encouraged, at least by the depth of the number of applicants and the quality of the applicants that it seems like we have. Couple other things, very briefly. We've heard a lot about spongy moths, as I'm sure you have. Over the last month, they have certainly decimated a lot of our trees in the county, particularly oak trees. It's too late now, it's been too late for some period of time to do anything about them for this year. But we did approve a, doing a research study this fall to try to determine what the egg population is out there and what the implications of that are for next year. There is at least some strong thought that as the spongy moth population cycles over the years, that perhaps we've seen the worst of it for a while and that that will start to decline, but we want to see what the survey says, so we have another idea about that. The one thing I can tell you for sure is that spraying is an exorbitantly expensive undertaking, and it's not really an undertaking that can be done piecemeal. Because spongy moths travel, if you don't cover fairly broad areas with a spraying program, the areas that are not sprayed are just going to migrate into the areas that have been. So it's really not a good solution unless we're in a position to do it broadly. So any questions that I can address?
Any questions of Mr. Hatfield?
Then an election plug, if I may. We do have elections coming up. It's vitally important that the commission seats are addressed in the primary, because for the most part, it's Republican versus Republican, and so that will be answered in the primary, not in the general election. And we all know that it's tough to get voters out for a primary election, but to the extent that you can encourage friends, neighbors, and others to get out and vote, I hope that you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave's going to hang around for a while. We have, second reading is on ordinance, he's going to help solve that. Okay, items by action by unanimous consent. Received place on file 14 invoices totaling $185,324.87 as detailed in the attachment. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Barlow, supported by Rezegi, receiving place on file 14 invoices totaling $185,324,087 as detailed in the attachments. Any discussion? Roll call.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Tassava.
Yes. Items of business, deliberation and selection of second ward council member. Earlier tonight, we interviewed Terry Stenselbarten. He's the only person that applied for second ward. What is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to appoint Terry Stenselbarten to the Hastings City Council to represent the second ward.
Motion by Brown, seconded by Rezegi, to approve the appointment of, to second ward council, Terry Stenselbarten. Discussion? Roll call.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Definitely.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Okay.
Brown.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. So he'll be sworn in the next council meeting, right, Sarah?
Yes.
Do you want him to come in and talk to you about anything prior to that?
Um, yeah, I'll have Marie put the new council member orientation packet together, and we'll be in touch.
Okay. Congratulations, Terry.
Thank you. What?
Congratulations.
Thank you. That means a lot, coming from all of you.
Okay. Okay, items of business, second item, item B, second reading and consider adoption of ordinance number 623, text amendments to the A1 Apartment District, A2 Apartment Edge District, and AO Apartment and Office District. Everybody get a chance to look at those? Any questions? Like I said, Dave Hatfield's here, and I think he pretty much jumped on these, so any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve? I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion by Rezegi, supported by Barlow, to approve the second reading and adopt ordinance 623 text amendments to A1 Apartment District, A2 Apartment Edge District, and AO Apartment and Office District. Any comments, questions? Roll call.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. We have second reading and consider adoption of ordinance number 624, text amendments regarding sign definitions and signs in the B1, the B2, B3, B4, and B6 districts. Anybody have any questions on that one? Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve those changes.
Motion by McLean.
Of ordinance 624.
Support. Motion by McLean, supported by Rezegi, to adopt ordinance number 624, text amendments regarding sign definitions and signs in the B1, B2, B3, B4, and B6 districts. Any further comment? Roll call.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. We also have a second reading of ordinance number 625. This is text amendments regarding buffer zone development standards and inclusion of section 90-1014 prohibited species. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to adopt ordinance number 625, text amendments regarding buffer zone development standards and the inclusion of section 90-1014 prohibited species. Any discussion, questions? Making it too easy on Mr. Hatfield.
You are, thank you.
Okay, motion made, supported, roll call.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, also in your packet tonight, we have a resolution 2024-17 to update the fees for various city services effective July 1st, 2024. Those are increase in truck parking, increase in park pavilion reservation fee, increase in park pavilion reservations for non-residents, increase in park use cleanup fee for parties 50 and up, increase in wedding administration fee, and new banner installation fee, and remove, no, excuse me, we're removing that. Do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution for 2024-17 to update various city services? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. To adopt resolution 2024-17.
Support. Okay, motion made by McLean, seconded by Jarvis, to adopt resolution 2024-17 to update fees for various city services effective July 1st, 2024. Discussion? Anybody have any questions on any of this stuff? Roll call.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Okay, item F, consider adoption of resolution 2024-18 as presented to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion by Rezegi, supported by Nesbit, to adopt resolution 2024-18 as presented to amend the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Any questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes. Also in your packet, we have consideration to appoint Jeff Sluggett to serve as city attorney representing the city of Hastings for matters related to code enforcement.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by Barlow, supported by McLean. Want to give us any background on this?
Um, did you want to just say hi? Sure, I'm happy to. Can you hear me okay?
Sure.
So, we just, our firm has got a lot of work going on and not enough people to do these court appearances, so this would specifically be in court, to represent you in court. So it's a very specific skill set, and Rockwood, no relation to me, my partner, who's done this all these years, is retiring. So unless and until we can replace him, what we've been doing with a lot of municipal clients is to partner with Blue Sluggett, a very well-known municipal law firm who does a lot of this work and has very, very competent ordinance enforcing people at their disposal. So we would just be partnering with them to help, you know, meet these needs for you for the time being. And I believe Jeff intends to be at the next meeting just to introduce himself, but highly recommend Jeff Sluggett. He's been in this business for 30-plus years. He's a city attorney for Kentwood. They do a ton of ordinance enforcement, as well as Walker and several other municipalities. So really just a way to make sure that, you know, you're getting timely service. They're very reasonable with their rates, and they do good work, so...
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
I have a question. I know that we go to court sometimes. A lot of times, we win cases, and we ask for the attorney fees to be paid. Are there any cities or villages that have judges a little friendlier than what we have in Berry County?
Um, good question. I think it just depends on the case and the situation, so it really varies.
But in some cases, they do...
Yes, in some cases.
The cities do get reimbursed for legal fees.
In some cases, they do. Yep.
Not all the time.
Not all the, as a matter of fact, more often than not, they do not award attorney fees. It's a high threshold, and especially if the person is having difficulty meeting your code ordinances because of financial constraints, the judge is usually hesitant to then pile on and also say they have to pay attorney fees, so they're usually hesitant to do that.
So the residents should understand that their neighbor that doesn't cut the grass all the time is costing them money, taking their tax dollars away from them for attorney fees. Not that you guys don't mind.
Right, right. Yeah, and of course, there is some discussion, and you know that Frank, your code enforcement officer, and certainly your police chief, they work with people, they really do.
Well, yeah, it's got a long time before that, but their attorney fees involve...
Yeah, yeah. So you don't have that many cases, certainly, that go to court, but when you do, you need somebody who is well-versed in court work, so...
I think there's been issues of come up over the years. I've been on the council 16 years, and Jeff Sluggett's name is real, recognizable. He's done some training for us, and, yeah, so...
He actually, he was at Law Weather, probably 27 years ago when I started practicing, and your prior city attorney worked with him as well, so maybe you knew him that way.
Right. Okay, we have a motion by Barlow, supported by McLean, to appoint Jeff Sluggett to serve as city attorney representing the city of Hastings for matters related to code enforcement. Any further comments? Rock call.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Tassava.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, you have three city hall landscape design bill based on the presentation and design. Everybody get a chance to look at those? Do you want to talk about this, Sarah, or do you want Travis to?
Um, we both can. I can start, and you can kind of fill in.
Sure.
So we didn't want to spend money unnecessarily on creating specs and having a design specified, so Travis basically asked these companies, what can he do for us under our budget? And they came up with the proposals that are in front of you. So they're not apples-to-apples comparisons, they're not all the same, but they're all suitable to meet our needs there on that side of the building. KV Landscapes' proposal is the least expensive. Their plant selection looks suitable. They don't have a drawing, so we don't know exactly what they have in mind as far as plant placement. Harder and Warner's plan also is very suitable for that location. I personally don't, I haven't experienced, just have a lot of success with boxwoods in the past, and they're included in both KV Landscapes and Harder and Warner's plans. That being said, I know Travis has had some conversations with them about swapping those out for a different shrub, and they're open to that for the same price. And then Katerberg's plan, it has a few more plants in total than some of the other plans, and they better match our existing landscaping. They have the same roses that we have over by the shed where the wall is, and some of the same evergreen spruce shrubs that we have elsewhere on City Hall's campus, so it just kind of matches that area better. So really, they're very similar in price, they're within a few hundred dollars of each other, so our recommendation is to pick whichever one you like best, whichever one you feel is most suitable for the landscape on that side of City Hall. Did I miss anything, Travis?
No, I don't think you did.
You didn't feel comfortable with Harder-Warner there?
I didn't feel uncomfortable with them.
No, she was saying the boxwood, I think that's what she said.
Yeah, I just don't particularly have good experience with boxwoods. They're susceptible to issues.
My experience with boxwood, they collect a lot of trash, a lot of litter, anything, anything blows out the street gets hung up in those things. I personally like, I like, but they said that they could, they could switch these out for...
Yes.
I like the pink knockwood rose over behind the wall over here by the sculpture by the end of the garage. They got some of that, and it looks nice over there. So that would be a continuation of what we're doing, but... So, any questions, Sarah, Travis, on these three bids? What's your pleasure?
I move that Harder-Warner is acceptable.
Okay, motion by Bowers to go with Harder-Warner. Do I hear a support?
Support.
Supported by Barlow. Discussion.
I tend to like the Katerberg design better, the plants better, even though they're more expensive.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said I tend to like the Katerberg design better and the plants better, even though they are a little more expensive, it just seems to be more appealing to me.
I was going to say the same thing. You know, the third company has got a lower price, but they have a drawing.
Hard to go by that.
I like the plants that have the price better, so...
Okay, we have a motion by Bowers, supported by Barlow, to go with Harder-Warner, and that price was, what was that price?
Sixty.
Turn the page here. Sixty-one oh four. And maybe we can talk to them about changing out some of those plants?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and support. Any further comments? Rock call.
Jarvis.
Uh, no.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
No.
Rezegi.
No.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Motion passes five to four.
Okay. Consider authorizing DPS staff to place old dump truck number 80 and number 350 on Ranger bid for sale.
Oh, make the motion to support that, approve that.
Motion by McLean.
Sorry.
Supported by Rezegi, to authorize DPS staff to place old dump trucks number 80 and number 350 on Ranger bid for sale. Any questions? I see one truck has blade, Snowblade, and the other doesn't. They're both, they've been pretty good trucks. I think what's hap, I think, I think in the last few years, we spent a lot of money repairing diesel motors on that machine line. Is that true?
Yes, and also they're rusted out in the bed, so that would take some significant funding to fix, repair those.
Okay, well, I got a, I got a motion by McLean and support by Rezegi to place the dump trucks number 80 and number 350 on Ranger bid for sale. Any further discussion? Rock call.
McLean.
Yes.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Rezegi.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brown.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
Tassava.
Yes.
Staff presentation and policy discussion, we have none. City manager report.
So I was asked by one of the council members who had been asked by a resident to explain what it means that we have a partnership with Service Line Warranties because they are a separate company, and some of our residents who are water and sewer customers have been getting those mailings. So to remind you, since it's been some time, since the marketing agreement was approved, that partnership is really twofold. The first aspect of it is education. By doing this mailing at no cost of public dollars, they're notifying residents of their responsibilities for water and sewer service lines, and the second part of the partnership is that they create an option for coverage, for warranty coverage, should they assess their own situation and determine that that's needed, as many of our homeowners don't have options for that. So that's really where that partnership comes in. And if you get any questions from residents, feel free to direct them to City Hall. We've answered a lot of questions about it, and we're happy to help anybody who has any questions or concerns regarding that. Also, wanted to fill you in on our current status with clerk treasurer. Bill Schmidt has been delayed several times now in joining us here at the city. Unfortunately, his spouse has some unexpected medical concerns that have kept him from being able to join us. I'm awaiting some final information about what he maybe can or can't commit to at this time, but it is very possible that he may not be able to join us in the next few weeks, in which case, we probably need to go in a different direction and pursue an alternative means to achieve some different kinds of clerk treasurer services. So I will be working with Gov. HR on getting that information and on figuring out, we're, given where we are in the fiscal year and some of our products that are coming up around the corner, what the best way is to manage that. So I will keep you apprised of anything that changes in regard to the clerk treasurer position.
Okay, also in your packet, you have Chief Boulder's monthly report. Chief Boulder, I think he's on vacation, but we have the deputy chief here. Do you want to say anything?
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, everybody knows who the deputy chief is.
Yeah, I wanted to introduce myself first of all to the council members I haven't met yet, future council members.
Thank you, very much.
Jules Kelly, the deputy chief, Hastings PD, and chief is on vacation, so lucky him. I, first of all, wanted to ask if there's any questions of the chief's report that I can answer for you guys. Good, thank you. And then I did want to just remind people out there listening and to all you folks here, we are hiring. We do have space and state funds available still to sponsor somebody, this coming academy. I believe it starts in August, so we're willing to hustle in the next couple of months to get somebody hired and in the academy. We are also still accepting lateral officers, obviously. It makes it a lot easier for us, a little bit lower risk than sponsorship, because obviously the certification is taken care of. So if you know anybody or have anyone interested, at the very least, send them to undown to us for a ride-along so they can see what it's like. I would also like to just repeat the chief sentiment here, one of our reserve officers, Kurt Worm, he just took a position as a Marine deputy, so he's doing some noble work doing that, but he's still working as a dispatcher for Berry Central, so obviously not a whole lot of hours in the day to begin with, so he's taken a step away from our unit, but we do have a new reserve officer, as I think the chief has probably mentioned in his last couple of times here, Rich Rao. So we're happy to have him onboard, and we are also taking reserve officers. We have been getting, I just want to acknowledge, we've been getting a lot of speeding complaints around the city. I just want to reassure everybody that we are doing our very best to take care of that. Our radar trailer is still down. We are probably going to have to spend lots of money for wiring issues, so for people who don't know, that's why it hasn't been out, that's why it hasn't been moving around. It's just out of service right now. But I do have several directives out to the officers of certain areas that are higher traffic and higher issues right now. So there's, again, only so much time in the day, but they're doing their best for, you know, making sure that at least their presence is in those areas for people to slow down. School is out, kids are out playing at summertime, so we realize it's a serious need, so just want to make sure you guys know that we're addressing that. That's it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I want you to pass on to Kurt Worm that I want to go on record as thanking him for service with the city. He's an exceptional gentleman, and I wish him well, so...
Yeah, I'm sure he'll appreciate that. Yep, I will pass that along.
Also in your packet, you have a monthly financial report. Anything to add to that report, Sarah? Seeing you're the financial expert now.
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Also in your packet, Dan King's monthly report for community development. Lot of, lot of nice pictures in there, Dan. Anything to add, Dan?
I have nothing further to add.
Okay. Reports and communication. Item A, May 8th, 2024 Riverside Cemetery Preservation Advisory Board Minutes. Item B, July 2024 Calendar. Entertained a motion to accept those two items and place on file?
I'll make a motion to accept those items and place on file.
Support. Okay, motion by McLean, supported by Barlow, to accept items A through B and place on file. No further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Public comment. Anybody want to get back up there and speak again?
Gary White, Nashville. Jeff Sluggett was our village president, our village attorney back when I became village president back in 96, 98. Believe it or not, one is a write-in. They took me for about two and a half hours and filled me in on everything I probably didn't want to know and had to know as a village president. It was interesting, listen to Commissioner Hatfield. When I went to Woodland Township, okay, I should start. Of the 16 townships, I have not been to Assyria, Berry, and Irving Townships, so I get to hear a lot of commissioner reports from all these different townships. This last month in Woodland Township, Commissioner Mike Colton made the statement in the meeting and stuff that the COA is going to be built whether the village passes or not. Then when Commissioner Hatfield said, there's still time for public, you know, public comment, public input, I'm sort of at a loss now at this point in time because they have 354,000 approved for that, and I'm just sitting, you know, through the COA and through the county, and they just hired a construction manager, so do we really have an opportunity for input or not? Because I'm sitting there thinking, I heard two different stories from two different commissioners now. So that's one of the things I just really wanted to bring out. It's important that your community is represented. I'm not sure if you folks have had an opportunity to review the plans and how that's going to impact, you know, your community, so that's the reason I said, I just, I've heard two commissioners, one say it's not, and one say it is, so I am at a loss right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody else for public comment?
This is a first, I've never gone back up. But, again, Courtney is the executive director at COA, um, so I just want to reiterate that the village and the building are two separate, um, topics, and so before we started the building process, we did have, um, six or eight, I can't remember off the top of my head, community meetings where I did go around to Berry County. Um, the public has been asked and requested several times to give their input, and we continue to do that through different processes. So, um, just to keep the two subjects separate, the village does cover our operations, that is our main focus right now, um, is making sure that those facts are shared with communities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Anybody else?
Just to try to clear up any confusion, uh, as Courtney just, uh, inferred, there are still a number of steps to be taken. Uh, fundraising has not been completed. A construction manager has been retained to help, uh, review the plans and secure bids. We won't know what that project costs until we get bids in, uh, and at the time that we know that, what it's going to cost and how it's going to be funded, then a final decision will be made, and there will be plenty of discussion about that at the county, you know, commission level. So, Gary, you heard it here. Well, you, you, you heard it here and you can quote me, okay? Am I right, Courtney? Thank you. So you heard it twice. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I say one other thing? I want to really thank you for, uh, passing, uh, the, uh, three ordinances that came in front of you tonight, particularly six twenty-three. We, while it, the movement is slow, we're doing every, we, the planning commission, are doing everything we can to try to increase opportunities for additional housing in the community, and this was, uh, another step in that right direction. So, thank you very much, uh, you'll hear more.
Hey, mayor and council comment. Any comments on that bill? Don, any comments there?
Note Boom is running.
Note Boom Junior. Mark Note Boom Junior.
Running for sheriff, too.
Yeah, he's a deputy.
Is it the airport manager?
No.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else.
Any comments on that? Al?
No comment.
Jackie?
Oh, wait, I do have a comment. That was a nice article in the paper, the fire chief had, uh, the interview. You have a good interviewer? Oh, sorry.
Any, any comments, uh, Jackie?
Yeah, I just have a question, and, and it's kind of a, a odd question. Somebody had asked me something and I, I kind of blanked out. Um, but the city, and I think, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this question, but we don't, um, as a city, like, have a, like, an agreement with people to park, let's say their business had a lot of grass, like, we don't have an agreement for people, like, to park on grass, do we? Okay.
Yeah, parking lots have to be, uh, serviced.
Yeah, so, okay, I just was clarifying that for, uh, my constituents who asked.
Corwin?
No.
John?
I just want to congratulate Terry Stuntzel-Barton for his new position, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, John, that means a lot coming from you.
Well, I'm looking forward to working with, uh, Terry, and, and, uh, when you go through your, uh, orientation with a city manager, uh, the municipal league offers all kinds of training for you, so don't hesitate to sign up for some of that stuff, so. We have, uh, Open Meetings Act rules, we have, uh, you know, finance information, all kinds of things, they, anything you think of as a council member, they'll get you the training on. I want to, and I, I have, I have a comment on, uh, on the COA, uh, I used, I was on the COA for nine years, and, uh, one of the things we did, uh, I think I was still on the board when it happened, we had an open house for the City of Hastings, and they had the most people at that meeting of any other meetings you've had, I think. So I think the citizens know, but if you don't know, go out there and ask questions, you know, everybody's got to understand what's going on, so. Uh, with that being said, uh, closed session. Consider recessing into closed session at the conclusion of regular business as permitted by Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, section fifteen dot two sixty-eight dash eight H, to consider material exempt for disclosure by state or federal statute to receive privileged attorney-client communication.
I'll make the motion to recess to closed session.
Motion by McLean.
Support.
Supported by Jarvis. To go into closed session as authorized by Public Acts two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, section fifteen dot two sixty-eight dash eight H, to consider material exempt for disclosure by state or federal statute to receive privileged attorney-client privilege. Rookall.
Nesbit.
Yes.
Resegui.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yep.
Brum.
Yes.
Jarvis.
Yes.
McLean.
Yes.
And Tassava.
Okay, we're done.